Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to October 3rd, 2018 meeting of the Danville Walk County Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you for your presence, being here and taking interest in the decision this commission is faced with today. We, as tradition, begin our meetings in prayer. For God and Father in heaven, we thank thee for this most beautiful day, the health you've given us, and allowing us to live another day on your creation. We continue to pray for our servicemen and women who are serving on foreign soils to defend our freedoms. We pray that you would bless, protect, comfort them, let those conflicts be resolved, bring them home to their loved ones as soon as possible. We thank thee for the safety and well-being, the protection, all the blessings of this day and this life you've granted to us. We thank thee for this country we live in, this community we live in, and the blessings of it. We pray as we make decisions here this day, they will be in accordance with your will, and they will be the betterment for all involved, and particularly for this wonderful community you've granted us. Continue to watch over and care for us. God guard, direct us in all things. Pray in Christ's name, amen. Item B on the agendas, or excuse me, item C is the approval of minutes from August 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
September 2018, I'll get it right in a minute. Thank you, Terry. Motion's been made to approve.
I'll second.
And Jeff seconds. Question or motion to approve the minutes for September 2018. Hearing none, all in favor? Both unanimous. Item E, the audit presentation with regard to the audit report. Steve, do you have that?
I'll jump past the finance report, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry. I'll get it straight after a while.
You're good.
Item D, financial report, 2018, August.
I'm just here if you guys have any questions on it. It's in your packet.
Everybody should have a copy of that in their packet. Take a moment, look that over, please, see if there's any questions on that.
I'll just point out the balance sheet stuff's the last page, or the check balances are the last page. And when we get to the bonds in a few minutes, you'll see there's a different balance. You're looking at the August 31 finance report. There's been a little bit of activity in the surety account since then, so it'll, the bond page actually shows the current amount of the surety amount, but that's August 31 check balances.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Terry moves. We approve.
I'll second.
And Mary Beth seconds. Questions, discussion on the motion to approve the financial report for August 2018. Hearing none, all in favor? Both unanimous. Thank you. Item E, 2017-18 audit report presentation.
I'll just introduce, we have Mr. Craig Butler and Chad Robinson here from our auditing firm, and I'll just lead in real quick to say you guys should have a copy of the audit in your packet. Went out to you guys, the budget committee's reviewed a draft audit and met with the firm, and we'll let these guys give us a quick report, but I will point out, one of the goals when we revised the audit RFP was to get the audit in a more timely fashion, and these guys knocked it out of the park this year. Here it is, October 1. We got our audit in your packet. It's actually been done for a few weeks, just timing of our meetings. It's the first time you guys can look at it, but as opposed to last year, getting it almost mid-year just because, you know, various transitions. So I appreciate the firm getting this done fairly timely for you guys. So I'll turn it over to, I think, Craig.
As Steve said, I'll be brief. We went over in detail with the budget committee.
Just introduce yourself, please.
Oh, I'm Chad Robinson with Kerbal Rhodes &amp; Butler. As Steve said, we went over in detail the audit report with the budget committee. I'll just kind of point out a couple highlights real quick. We did have an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, which is the opinion that you are shooting for. We had no major findings or issues that we needed to discuss. The one item I will point out is that you were positive on your revenues over budget. You had more revenues come in than you budgeted, and then you also had less expenditures than you budgeted as well. So compared to your budget for the year, you were on the positive. That's all I'll go through in detail unless you have any questions.
I have a question.
Sure.
There were a lot of notes and adjustments, I guess the governmental way of accounting versus standard accounting. Could you maybe give us a little oversight on that, because that was a lot to move through.
Sure.
Are you talking about page?
Introduce yourself.
I'm sorry, I'm Craig Butler of Kerbal Rhodes &amp; Butler.
Thank you.
Which page are you on?
All the notes. There are probably notes explaining the adjustments that went on throughout.
Yeah, you have basically two financial statements in this report. You have a general fund financial statement, and then you have an overall financial statement. The fund financial statement just deals with current assets and current liabilities. The government-wide overall financial statement basically deals with everything, whether you have fixed assets, debt, and then current assets and liabilities. In other words, the overall governmental financial statement is sort of like a private business financial statement, whereas the general fund just deals with your cash and your current liabilities. And those adjustments aren't really anything that you guys did wrong that we had to adjust. It's just numbers to get from the current basis to an overall basis.
Yeah, it was just hard.
Nobody understands this financial statement except for CPAs. I mean, literally nobody. And I always cringe when we get that question. It's like, oh, no, I'm going to have to explain something that doesn't make any sense, but that's the way governmental financial reporting works.
Okay. I would probably feel that kind of a crispy answer.
Other questions on our audit report? Anything else, gentlemen, y'all would like to present?
I don't think so.
Okay. We thank you all very much for your service and appreciate the audit report in such a timely manner.
Thank you.
Any questions, anything else from the commission? If not, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the audit.
Susie moves. We approve. And then seconds. Questions, discussion on the motion to approve the audit report? Hearing none, all in favor? Both unanimous. Thank you all very much. Item F, letters to credit Center Estates, Barry Metcalf.
Yep, we're going to give an update on the bonds, and again, if you guys don't mind turning to your bond page, it was sideways in your packet. We formatted it a little different. As you remember, last month, we had a discussion about Center Estates, Mr. Metcalf's development, and by the way, the PowerPoint is not working. We had an exhibit ready to go. There's some technical problems with the projector, so we're not going to be able to show you guys some current pictures, but if you remember, the sidewalk was constructed differently than what needed to be. We asked that we got an approval to potentially cash the developer's bond at $50,000 to backstop the improvements that were needed. Since that time, we actually met on-site with the developer, myself, and the city engineer, and we went through, and Lisa was with us too, and we went through all the issues out there on-site. The developer corrected several of those by last week or the week prior. He fixed the sidewalk. He built a new section of sidewalk that we didn't even talk about. The city wanted to see constructed. He dug a ditch and made some other improvements. So at that point, the city gave us a new number, which was $13,500, which is left to correct, that they feel the only proper correction can be made by the city. And that deals with that ditch down at the corner. They're not confident that we can resolve that through the developer's efforts, so what we're doing today is we're asking you to reduce the cash bond to $13,500, and we have that money in the bank. So that shows up on this new statement. We've taken that as a letter of credit to cash. You see that we're now adding $13,500 that Mr. Metcalf has contributed, and then we also did an adjustment for Maple Tree where we paid out on that drainage. So we've got a new running balance of $88,000 and some change in that surety account. And where we're at with the project is now we have the money, we have a correction to make that we anticipate the city will make on our behalf, and then we'll reimburse the city for that improvement. And the bid, or the quote is $13,500 to fix that end portion of the sidewalk drainage, put a pipe under the road. So that's just an update on the bond list, but I do need a formal approval because we are actually formally reducing that prior cash bond to $13,500.
Questions?
We had pictures on the PowerPoint to show you all the revisions. Went out there on a rainy day to show you where the water goes downhill, and just give you an update, basically.
You could send them to us in an email if you want.
We can do that. It was timely for today. It just didn't work out, as well as several other things we're going to show, but we just need to get that bond reduced approval and to let you know we're going to just put that in our list of cash projects that we need to complete. Yes, sir?
This question. We have two projects under that name.
Yeah. Yeah, it's interesting. The first one, it's always called the Clark's Run Mobile Home Park, is called Center Estates, formerly on the plat and on the bond, and that's actually the mobile home park that's back there in the back that was never completed. Streets never became city streets. That's Center Estates. We're just calling that Section 1, and this is also called Center Estates.
So we call that bond as well?
We're holding that cash right there, yes. But there's no remedy for that project because some of that bond money was to be used for a cul-de-sac that was never completed, nor were those streets ever constructed to a city standard to be accepted. So the money's sitting in kind of the surety account. The plan is the city will construct the outer sidewalk from this problem we have at that ditch, that they'll make a sidewalk that kind of goes around the horn the other way, and we'll use that money to construct the sidewalk, but there won't be a cul-de-sac ever constructed, which was what part of that money was for. And the developer's kind of gone. So we're holding that money, and that's very old. You can see it goes back to, we called it in 2003, so five years prior. That was 1988 is when that project was kind of started.
So we're never going to use it?
Well, we're going to build sidewalks. The city would like to build sidewalks around the outer edge, which was part of that, but it kind of moves a little bit outside of the scope of that original bond, and we'll bring that to you if we ever, if they tell us what they're wanting to do. But I'm not sure what we're going to do with that money because it was meant to build a cul-de-sac and build city streets that were never constructed, and the developer's gone.
Any other questions?
We need a motion?
Yes.
On the $13,500?
I made a motion that, motion to reduce that?
Reduce the $50,000 cash to $13,500.
And to make things clear, we've received the $13,500 from the developer already.
Yeah, it's in our surety account.
I make that motion.
Jeff moves that we approve the $50,000 reduced to $13,500.
I'll second it.
And Mary Beth seconds. Questions, discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, all in favor? Both unanimous. Item G, subdivision approvals.
There was none submitted.
Under HO Business, William McAnley, Argyle Woods Property.
Yep, you should have a revised site plan in your packet. Again, apologize that the PowerPoint's not working. We had all these exhibits up there, and you guys should have everything we're going to talk about today. Unfortunately, the audience isn't going to be able to see some of these exhibits, but as we move through the cases. As you remember, we reviewed this site plan last month, and where we got hung up at the end, and we tabled this item, was Mr. Carver was not able to be here. He's here today. Kendall Wise is here, the engineer. And the neighbors next door in the first section of the condominium development were concerned about a buffer, if you remember. Mr. Carver has met with some neighbors and made a proposal, and it is now addressed on this revised site plan, which is basically, and I'll let them get up here, but you can see the note, how they're going to put a fence up there on the northern side of that development. And again, Mr. Carver may want to speak to that, or Kendall, but everything was in line with what we asked for, and the developer's here today with his engineer to answer any questions you guys might have, or any additional questions that any neighbors that might be here again might have. You guys want to say?
Do any of the neighbors have any comments?
We got neighbors here. It must be different neighbors. I think they were satisfied. I think he worked with them over there, and I'm not surprised if they're not here because he went out to address the concern.
Apparently, you've addressed it, or they would be here.
Then I make a motion. We accept it.
Jeff moves. We approve.
Second.
Jeff seconds. Questions, discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, all in favor? Both unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item I, public hearing. Brian Sharp, application to rezone property located at 3204 Perryville Road, Danville. Track of land containing 2.33 acres. Requested zone change from GRA, general residential to AR1 agriculture.
Thank you. I'll lead off. That's okay. And the applicant is in the room. Mr. Sharp's back there in the back corner, back there. And we've got some neighbors, I believe, that are here also. And this is a zone change request, and it is a tad bit odd, and I'll give you guys a little bit of background information. And again, there's no exhibits on the PowerPoint that you guys can see, but I've got everything in your staff report that we'll walk through and identify them by page number as I reference some maps. We had this application filed on August 24. The applicant, again, is Brian Sharp. He's also the property owner. Location of the property is 3204 Perryville Road. Property size is 2.33 acres, plus or minus. As you heard the chairman mention, this is a different kind of request. It's going from GRA, or what we call single-family residential, large lot. What we used to know as R1, and that's relevant too, and I'll mention that in a minute. And the proposals go back to AR1 or agriculture, simply for the purpose to conduct a dog kennel, let the property owner desires to run a dog kennel business off of his property. And I want to point out one issue, and I'll give you a little summary here, but the zoning history, agriculture is the original zoning for the property back in the day. Everything was agriculture out in the county. It was zoned to R1 somewhere around 1971 or so. There was two readings. '71, we went to R1, and then in 2002, when the county adopted the new zoning ordinance, R1 converted to GRA. So that's how we are today.
When did it go to GRA?
In 2002, when the county adopted the new ordinance. County adopted the new zoning ordinance in '02, the city in '04. So everything converted from something to something. Basically same use, just new names. So R1 is what we used to call everything single-family back in the day, and it became GRA. So R1s, what a lot of people still call it when they called in, say, hey, I thought I zoned R1, and what's this GRA sign? But same thing. And then again, the first section of Harmon Heights, which this lot is part of, was along the road. It was zoned in '71. '87, there was a secondary zone change. It was the rear section for Dale's, Nancy, and Harmon Heights and all that to the kind of south. The second phase of Harmon Heights was zoned in '87. This application review's a little bit different. It's checked at the bottom of page one, is existing zoning inappropriate? And let me give you a little background information real quick on the project. The applicant and the planning commission have had a short little history here. We got a, basically a code enforcement complaint a few months back about a gentleman possibly running a dog kennel at this property. We went out and met with the property owner. He was very straightforward about everything. Yeah, I've got some dogs, and I'm breeding some dogs, and I'd like to have a dog business. He was unaware that he needed a different kind of zoning. He thought he could do this. We explained to him that in the GRA district, there's no permission to have a dog kennel formally. There's also a little bit of confusion in the zoning ordinance. We basically defined what a kennel is. Just the presence of the fourth dog makes you a kennel. So we have this situation all the time in what we call our code enforcement side. We'll get a call and say, hey, someone's got five dogs. Well, by default, we got to say that's a kennel. Where there really is a kennel, and they're really selling dogs, or grooming dogs, or boarding dogs, just the presence of four dogs in a single-family district, one dog's got to go, basically. And that's how we do code enforcement. In this case, the gentleman wants to keep his dogs and breed the dogs and have a dog kennel. So when we do code enforcement, what we do to be fair to property owners is we tell them what the remedy is, as well as what the violation is. So we sent him a notice of violation and said, hey, we got to get rid of the dog kennel or get it legal. He chose to get it legal, which is why we're here. So he is proposing to zone this property from GRA back to agriculture, which would permit a dog kennel. His other option would have been to go from GRA to maybe, let's say, commercial, because that would permit a dog kennel. Because his desire is to keep the dogs and keep the kennel, it is in operation today, although he's kind of, he's sort of halted with his construction idea, and there is a picture in your packet of what he desires to build as far as his formal kennel. He's got some different kennels on the property and different kind of combination of dogs on the property. We've been out there several times and talked to Mr. Sharp. He came in timely after the notice, filed his zone change request, paid the fees and whatnot, and so here we are today. Again, the planning commission is looking at a zone change. You guys have different options. An applicant can come forward and say, hey, I'm in compliance with the comprehensive plan, meaning the future land use map, and we'll just tell you right now that is not the case on this. They can make a choice that there's been a major change. We've had cases like that where they can say, we feel the zoning's inappropriate. He's taking the position that he feels the zoning's inappropriate, and it's more of the zoning just doesn't fit, but I understand that. And it's, and you could see an argument either way. You, as a planning commission, have to review this zone change case after you hear all this evidence and decide if you feel the zoning was inappropriate, but you still have the authority to say, we want to look at the comprehensive plan, and that's what's going to guide our decision, and I'll point that out in the staff report. So when you guys finally get done with this case, as we walk on down through all the comments, you guys have to find it's either meets the intent of the comprehensive plan and the future land use map, or in absences of that, you feel it is inappropriate zoning or some other finding you feel you might come to a conclusion on. That's the background, and I'll just get through this really fast then and wind up so some folks can talk. Page two, some photos of the property. Again, the property fronts Perryville Road. We did a street view, so you could see the property. I'm sure most of you guys drove out there as you do when you get your packets. Page three of the staff report talks about a concept plan, Article 1810 of our zoning ordinance, and says, as a condition granted, any zone change, the planning commission will require submission of a concept plan. And I know you guys have seen lots of concept plans over the years, and this doesn't really probably meet what you typically see, but I'm okay with that on this instance because this is a, this is a code enforcement situation. We're trying to remedy one way or the other, and in that kind of spirit of cooperation, this is what this gentleman chose to make his concept plan, which was a written concept plan, what I think is permissible. We don't always have to have a drawing and rooftops. We can get a written concept plan. So he wrote out a short narrative himself, and he submitted a photo, basically to show you that's what he wants to build if the zone change is successful, to house the dogs on the property. What we don't have, and I'll point that out later in the staff reports, we really don't have a good location on the property where that would be and what we traditionally see as a concept plan, but I think it meets the intent of 1810, and it'll be a jumping off point for discussion. And again, when we're doing code enforcement action, we're doing whatever we can to get some remedy, some decision, or some code action, and we're working towards that. So we move to page four. You guys do see the zoning map in two shots. You see the GRA zoning in a smaller neighborhood view, and you see what we call Harmon Heights, and you see a zoomed-in property shot of his property. It's not very good, but you do then see the building to the rear, a couple cars in that aerial. That aerial's dated, by the way, but currently, the dog kennel kind of is in that general area. There's been some pens back there, and then again, he can describe to you where he wants to put this new structure, or where he desires to sort of, or how the whole property's going to kind of function as the dog kennel that he's got. I will point out, when we first went out to the property, we saw nine, 10 dogs, if that's that nature. Lisa's been out there a few times. Second trip, I went with her, and as the dogs were jumping on us and licking us and whatnot, they were all friendly dogs, by the way, that we saw that day. We counted about 13 dogs. Then we got reports that there were as many as 40 dogs at some point. We've talked to Brian over this, and what that is, is he has an amount of male dogs and female dogs, and then there's just kind of puppies coming in different waves. So the number just keeps fluctuating. At some point, we were up to 40, and it may be less now, maybe more, I'm not sure, but the main premise is there's an amount of adult dogs on the property, and he's, you know, generating puppies, and he's got a dog kennel, a formal dog kennel that he sells dogs from. So we'll move to page five of the staff reports. We're getting into our comprehensive plan review as we do every time on the zone change. Again, even though this is an inappropriate zoning request, we still want to bring you the comprehensive plan verbiage that you guys should look at on every case. First part of the goals and objectives, general land development, community facilities and land use. Those are just goals and objectives. You guys can read them for what they're worth. They give you a little bit of guidance, but I think that the bottom of page five, where we get into the future land use map, is where you get your direct guidance on the comprehensive plan. Page six of your staff report, again, right under development review provisions. This was recently amended, as you guys know, this past spring. It says, rezoning requests shall be reviewed for consistency with the future land use map and the development provisions. And then you jump down to the next paragraph, and I'll put my glasses on. It says, all proposals for new development must be assessed to determine compatibility with existing surrounding development. And the sentence, second sentence says, compatibility may be shown because the proposed use is the same as the surrounding neighborhood, or it may be established by site design, buffering, control of access to adjacent neighborhood, or other agreed development measures. That gets back to the concept plan, if there is one. What are we going to put on the property? Where are we going to buffer? If things aren't compatible, how are we going to make them compatible? And I think that's why we got an issue here today, is we've got a dog kennel in the neighborhood, and there's a compatibility issue, I think, that currently exists. Lack of compatibility, possibly, in a lot of folks' mind. Again, there's exceptions to the future land use map. It does reference correction of mapping errors, although I don't think this is a mapping error. And then you turn to the next page, page seven, and this isn't a good close-up shot for you guys, but that is the future land use map. So when you zoom in on Harmon Heights right there, you see the future land use designation for this area is low-density residential. And then at the bottom of page seven, we talked to you guys a little bit, or outlined for you guys again, what agricultural land use would be and what low-density is. Again, this property is on 2.33 acres. It is a part of Harmon Heights subdivision. Again, we're supposed to look at rezonies for consistency with the flume, and in this area of the flume, there's a definition of what agricultural is, and there's low-density, which fits what the neighborhood currently is. Page eight of the staff report, and I'll wind up here, are the staff items of concern. Again, to be fair to all parties involved, because there's a lot of stuff here, we left it kind of to technical things. Final site design, you know, where was the building going to go? How tall? Where at? Mr. Sharp can explain some of that. Was there going to be any additional parking? And he's indicated, no. Were there going to be formal lightings? Again, this is not a traditional commercial development we tend to see, or a fairly big dog kennel, or boarding facility, but those are the things we always think about when we're looking at any project that's going from residential to commercial. The other thing, obviously, is compliance with the flume. Again, the flume was, the comp plan's been revised in 17. The flume is fairly new, and it is important to review, but again, as you look at the findings, it's almost like I typed this up, right there, there. At the bottom of page eight, there's the findings you guys have to make, which is, and it's interesting, in that paragraph, and I'll get into the second sentence, it says, must find that the map amendment is in agreement with adopted comprehensive plan, or in the absence of such finding, that the existing zoning classification given the property's inappropriate or major changes. So we're right back to what you guys have to find is that meet the comp plan, which is the future land use map, but could be other things, fairly, or in the absence of you guys making that finding or choosing to look at the comp plan, doesn't meet one of those other state directives. And that's it. And then again, you guys got a canned motion up or down in your packet. I'll be glad to answer any questions you guys might have. Mr. Sharp's here, and he's prepared to sort of give you a summary of what he wants to do, and I believe there's several neighbors here that'd like to comment also. And I'll be glad to answer any questions, any folks in the audience might want to direct at me. There's been some concern about the code enforcement action and our lack of movement, let's just say, but again, to be fair, we were timely with the notice. We've been talking with Mr. Sharp. We had another issue with some cars that we've worked, we've been working through, and he filed his application timely at our directive, but we're not here till today. So, you know, we sort of have to stall our code enforcement till we get some remedy up or down, and then we're either back in the same place, or we're moving towards establishing a kennel on the property. I'd be glad to answer any questions you guys might have. I went through that fast, and I'm rambling, but there's a lot of folks here who want to talk.
If there are no questions, I think we'll hear from Mr. Sharp at this time. Please introduce yourself, give your address and so forth, if you would.
Yes, I'm Brian Sharp, 3204 Perry Road.
Thank you.
And he basically went over everything that is on the agenda, but the only difference is the future building, if it gets approved, where it would be. It would be at the south, southwest corner, next to another building that's been constructed. Really, all I have is just any questions or anything, any concerns?
How many, what's the amount of dogs you really plan on having there at any one specific time? And how much noise do they make?
Yeah, I'm keeping six adult dogs, four girls, two boys. Two of the, two of the girls will be fixed, two of the girls will not be fixed. So there'll be two boys, two girls that can breed, and they'll be pretty much every other, every other heat cycle, they'd be able to do it. But at the most, the average litter is probably six to eight pups. I have had one litter that was 16 pups, which is kind of crazy, but four of those didn't make it, so. But that's, that's the plan, and it's more of a pet than a true kennel, but I do want to have the option to breed them because of the breed and everything.
And I'm not sure about the law, but is there about the, a for-profit? I mean, I run a for-profit business out of my house. I don't do anything that disturbs the neighbors, except play my trumpet with the doors closed. And, you know, and most of our work is done away, but I, but, you know, but this seems to be different than that because it definitely, there are some things that filter into the neighborhood. And what's the closest building of the neighbors that would be affected by maybe odor of the animals, the noise of the animals, any other, you know, type of intrusive behavior by the animals that you have no control over?
About the only noise they make is if an ambulance comes by, they are start howling. They don't really, they're not really barkers. They're Siberian Huskies, so they, they just howl if they do any of that.
They get really hot, though, in the, in the, because I had one.
Yeah, they, in the summertime, they're in the shade most of the day.
Yeah, I had a Siberian Husky, and they're not comfortable in this environment.
Yeah.
Let's just say that. But, no, I just, because, you know, I mean, of course, it's a, it's a, if it's a commercial business.
Yeah, it's more of just a hobby instead of an actual kennel.
Well, but if you're selling the animals, it's not a hobby. I mean, that's honestly, I mean, you know, now I'm retired, and I play my trumpet as a hobby, and I don't have to worry about that anymore. But, 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 you know, any kind of commercial business that's located in the middle of a residential area, that I think that affects the quality of life of the, of the people around it, that's somebody else's estimation, not mine.
Yeah. Well, that's all I've heard from all of my neighbors, to me anyway, is that they love my dogs, but that could be different since the amount of them that's here.
And any type of, you know, I don't think it looks like there'd be any cleanliness issues by, based on what you're going to build or anything. But at the same time, you know, that's another issue, but I just want to know about that. Thank you.
Other questions? How big, how big physically will the kennel be? How many of them will there be? And what's, what's the parameters there, and how big can we go, or?
Well, the building that the picture is, is, it's like a four-foot, each kennel's four-foot wide by, I think it's 12-foot deep, so about half of that would be interior and half of it's exterior.
So if, if this is approved, Stephen, is there a limit to 1, 2, 3, 8, 10, 12? Is there a limit to the number of structures that can be built, or how do, how do we address that?
Yeah, both yours and Commissioner Demartens' questions are related to some degree, because what does the zoning ordinance allow? And when did this become a commercial business versus a hobby business? If we were to approve this back to agriculture, there's no cap on building, like the residential district. GRA right now has a cap on buildings for accessory buildings. It's based on your principal structure. When we're in agricultural district, we allow agriculture to be agricultural. So you can have, he could have multiple buildings. I think his desire is to have this one building, you would think, as a condition, and of course, you guys can add conditions on zone changes. A cap on the number of dogs would be a number, going to your question, you know, how many dogs? Well, that probably needs to be established, because then it relates to how many buildings potentially. But if, if there's, if this is not addressed through kind of the site development issue, yeah, there could be multiple buildings potentially. There could be multiple pens in the ag district if there's no cap. That's the other challenge we have, is the ag district's fairly loose on some things. Again, we allow kennels, veterinarian hospitals, schools, churches. We allow some things in the ag district that are a little surprising, that small-scale things we did 50 years ago make sense, but today, great big facilities, some of these are just basically commercial businesses that would potentially could be next to neighborhoods. So our ag district, though, is kind of a, you know, we do a lot of things out there, including dog kennels, and whatever scale and size. But then, again, you guys have an opportunity here. Very rare we see a zone change back to agriculture. So if I had a five-acre tract out in the county right now, I could open a dog kennel, and it's up to me how many dogs that is, because there's no real kind of citing authority, because I'm already agricultural. So all those things are relevant.
Thank you. Yes, counsel.
You, the applicant has to agree to conditions. This body cannot impose conditions as maybe the Board of Adjustment can impose. It's those, only those conditions that the applicant agrees to.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from the commission?
So how close is your nearest neighbor? Like, do you have a neighbor behind you that is right behind the kennel?
Right now, probably the closest house to where the kennel is is, I'm guessing, I don't know, 100, 150 foot, I don't know.
I guess I have a question. How long have there been dogs to this number on the property? Does it goes back 30, 40 years, or is this relatively recent?
No, it's relatively recent. I just bought my first dog almost two years ago. So it's, it's relatively recent.
Any other questions from the commission? Hearing none, we'll provide the audience an opportunity to testify with regard to this request, and I'd like to just make a few statements prior to any other testimony that comes, in order to hopefully make things a little more efficient and deal with some issues we've had in the past. We'd like to be diligent with regard to everybody having the opportunity to speak, but at the same time, be efficient with regard to the use of our time. So I'd ask you to restrict your comments specifically to the request being considered. Please make your points specific. If the points you'd like to make have already been made, we do not need for you to repeat those points, but simply voice your support for those points, and that, again, that will save us some time. But if you have other points to be made that have not been made, you're certainly welcome to do so. I believe if your presentation is in writing and that you have your points written, it'll be more effective than just talking. And please refrain from comments that are not pertinent or relevant to the request being presented, and we've certainly had issues with that in the past. And so I, I will go ahead and say, in essence, the color of socked your grandmother wore years ago are not relevant to what we're discussing today, so we don't need to get that far off, off the point. So with those, those statements or thoughts being presented, I would ask if there's anyone here that'd like to speak in favor of the zone change request that's being presented? If you'd like to speak, come to the mic, introduce yourself, name and address, please. Yes, in favor?
In favor.
In favor. I thought I said in favor. Yes. Anyone like to speak in favor of the zone change request that's being presented? No one? Does anyone like to speak in opposition of the zone request being presented? If so, come to the mic, introduce yourself, give your name and address, please.
Good morning. My name's Phil Salmon, I live on Pearl Road.
Give us your address, please.
3564.
Thank you.
About a quarter of a mile.
And this has been recorded for, for record, so that's why we, we ask for that as a statement.
I would just like to, and I hope I'm not out of order, I'd just like to ask each one of you, if you're sitting on your back porch, you'd have to go in because you couldn't handle the stink from dog smell. I have several neighbors here that, that cannot sit outside on the porch because of the dog smell. One of his dogs got out about September the 21st. He killed a little dog that belongs to my neighbors here, I believe it was September the 21st, one of their pets. Now, that's kind of a sad situation. The gentleman said he's 100 feet or 150 feet from the nearest neighbor. There's homes all in back of him that joins his property. There's, Mr. Green lives right next door to him on Pearl Road, within, I want to say, 50 feet. And the days live right back, they can't let their little dog out because they're afraid something like this will happen to it. And another neighbor down there, property, Grubbs, I was out the other day, and we walked up in his backyard, and you can't handle it. The wind coming from the, out of the southeast, and this stink knocks you down. And another thing that Steve made a comment about was the automobiles out there. This was a beautiful, beautiful piece of property until this gentleman moved in. I understand maybe that his grandpa left it to him or something. His grandpa, wherever he lived, I prided him, kept that place up, and it looked great. He moves in, the first thing he does is have a bunch of junk cars. Looked like a junk, junkyard most of the time. And we just don't need that in a residential area. And I'm begging of you, not to change this. If you change it to agricultural, the man can build any kind of building he wants to build. So I'm just pleading with you not to prove it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition to the zone change request?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to know, was the little dog that was killed, was, whose property was it on?
I'm sorry.
My name is Brittany Craig, and we live on 3291 Perry Road. It's three houses over. I have no proof that it was his actual dog that got a hold of our dog, but it was a corgi, and it was attacked, and two weeks later, he actually passed. I took him to the vet every single day. It was horrible. We have pictures of his dogs loose in our neighbors' driveways that is 35-foot away.
Where was your dog when it was allegedly attacked?
In my yard, as far as I know. I had a, I own a business at my home, too, and I have a girl that works out of an office in my home, and she had the sliding door open, in and out. So as far as I know, in our yard.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, go ahead, please.
My name's Lee Fowler, I live at 109 Dales Avenue. I think I'm probably the nearest one next to this property. If you look on your page four, it shows Brian Sharp's property, and the down, in the left-hand corner, is my property. The, the building you see there is a three-bay garage. When I mow my grass, I'm just probably 25, 30 feet from the dog kennels. The distance from my garage over to the dog kennels is maybe 100 feet. My house is a little further away. As of today, I really don't know how many dogs Brian has. He might be able to tell us, but I'm guessing anywhere from 14 to 16 dogs. They don't bark a lot, but whenever you have an emergency vehicle going down the road with a siren, every one of them barks. They just howl and howl and howl. The meter reader came on his property about a week ago, and the dogs do a lot of barking, barking then. The smell is a factor. I'm very close to it. When the wind blows my way, there is a powerful odor. When it blows the other directions, it catches the other neighbors. Brian has anywhere from three to five dogs running loose all the time. He does have an electric fence in the ground, but they still get out. Just Monday afternoon, there was one in my yard. We have neighbors that are afraid to, you know, walk their little dog something down the sidewalk anymore. I know we're just supposed to comment on the, the dog issue, but I'm afraid if we do go to agricultural, there'd be no limit on what he can do. He does want to do junkyard and sell parts. His place looks like a junkyard now. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Good morning. My name's Kyle Nguyen, I live at 3350 Perry Road. My house is about 700 feet from this drive. Most things have been, you know, sets, I'll try and not address those. The kennel, I believe, is just a front for the junkyard, to be honest with you. The picture that has been shown back there about what's going to be built, that is already there now. I don't believe anything would be different than what's actually there. It looks very similar to what's there now. The noise has been addressed. I was actually over at my father-in-law's, who's right next door, and the smell was ridiculous on Monday. I have a 16-month-old son. I'm over at my father-in-law's most times. He's one of the biggest family men that I know. We have gatherings over there all the time, grandkids, and within the last two years, it has kind of affected how we have gatherings at our house. We have birthday parties for our little kids all the time, and it's an eyesore, and the safety of our children, first and foremost, has been jeopardized. I have a 16-month-old son. I was at my father-in-law's house about a week ago, and my father-in-law had to shoe one of the dogs back into the yard while I grabbed my son and kept him in the garage. The land in this area, for years, I'm originally not from Danville. I'm from northern Indiana. This has been my home for 14 years now, okay? The reason I purchased this home is because of the land. The families who have worked hard, they've, you know, the farmland, I think that they would, I can't speak for them, but I think they would be disappointed if this was approved. Personally, like I said, we brought this piece of property to raise my children in a good family land on Perryville Road, not to mention the neighborhood around Dales Avenue and Nancy. My question is, what's the economic, you know, what's the, what is, what is it bringing to Danville? You know, if it was a, if it was a junkyard bringing jobs, you know, for the community, obviously in the economy, that's a great thing. I just don't see that happening here today. I know there's another gentleman who wants to speak, but I wouldn't be opposed to seeing who is all in favor to, or not in favor, I'm sorry, to stand up. We have asked who hasn't been. I would urge this community, I think, is here to stand up who's not, who's not in favor of this.
We won't go that route. We'll just hear testimony, because that's not part of the record.
The, the last thing I'll leave you with today is, if, I don't know if you've been out there, not only do I think it needs to be denied, I think something needs to be done about personally what's there right now. It's, it's affected what's going on. I just believe if, if there's a little bit more rope given than already has been there, who knows where this will take it. So thank you for all you do, appreciate the time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
My name is Milton Grubbs, I live at 116 Nancy Avenue. If you look at the bottom picture, my home is in the bottom right. Then just to the back of our house, there's a large bunch of trees. The building that he built is in them trees, eight feet from my property line, not 150. The stink is unbearable when the wind comes out of the southeast, or, I mean, the southwest or due west approach, right? You can't go out on the back porch. The dogs bark, as they said, anytime that the sirens goes on, or not necessarily sirens The dogs bark, as they said, anytime that the sirens goes on, or not necessarily sirens, 3:00 in the morning, you can't sleep for the dogs barking. That's about all I have.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak? Come to the mic, please.
Uh, hi. Thank you all for having us here today. Uh, my name is Kristy Green. I live at 3233 Perole Road, which is next door to Mr. Sharp. And I just wanted to let Mr. Sharp know that this is nothing personal, really against you. I mean, I'm sure you're a nice guy and have very good intentions. Personally, um, I have had, not had that much trouble with the dogs. I mean, there's been a couple of nights, you know, that they have barked during the night. I'm sure that's, you know, something they has scared them and, you know, set them off. And we have had to get a noise maker or a noise machine for our bedroom to, you know, to help with the noise at night. But, the biggest thing to me is whenever I look at what the agricultural, exactly what that means, yes, you can have kennels, veterinary clinics, small animal hospitals, junkyards, disassembly plants, commercial feedlots. I mean, there is so much, if you all change this zone, that can be done. And I know he's already paying fines now and, um, but, you know, and it's, I'm afraid it's hurting our, uh, property value. When you come around our driveway, all you see is junk, 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 junk cars. And I'm not talking about running cars, I'm talking about cars with their wheels off, the wheels laying on top of them, just, you know, stuff everywhere. And, and I'm sorry, Brian, I, you know, we're neighbors and I don't want this between us. I really don't. I mean, I'm a nice person and I'm sure you're a nice person, but, you know, there is other places besides next door to us that can do this. You know, buy a place out in the country where you don't have to worry about having close neighbors. And, um, you know, like I say, you know, we have family gatherings every Sunday. I have my kids over every Sunday and I've got three grandbabies that love to play out in the yard. You know, and yesterday, we were just looking, you know, we were thinking about maybe putting up a privacy fence and I started walking over, you know, and I have walked over when he is in the yard and talked to him and the dogs have been fine. But, you know, yesterday, or, yeah, it was yesterday, when I walked over, you know, I, I kind of got a really uneasy feeling because I was like, ugh, you know, I better not go any closer because I was afraid that maybe they would come over and not like me being, you know, that close to their yard. But, you know, you all can do, you know, you all know what to do, what, what we need to do in this situation. And I, you know, I'm gonna pray that all of you all, you know, vote in favor of all the people that are here today. And, uh, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Come to the mic, please introduce yourself, name and address.
My name's Robert Doom. I live across, I live on Perole Road. I live, uh, across from the gentleman.
Give your address, please.
3263.
Thank you.
Perole Road. And I'll just keep it short and sweet. Uh, if any of you all were interested in buying or selling in a residential area, a home, would you all would like to have this in your neighborhood? That's all I have to say about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Hearing none. Uh, just a second. Uh, Mr. Sharp, the question has certainly been raised about the, the odor. Uh, with a kennel, should that be approved and with the number of dogs, what's the waste disposal plan if there is one?
Sir?
Not at the moment, sir.
Uh, well, uh, all right, you need to come back.
Yeah, come to the mic, please.
The intent is to just have the six dogs and the way that that kennel's made that I would like to make would be, uh, where you could wash it through the grates and then empty it as needed.
Empty it being what? When, when you say empty, just pouring out on the ground?
Take it and dispose it to trash.
I'm sorry?
Take it and dispose it to trash.
Okay. All right. Just curious with regard to that, does that?
But concerning some of the other issues that's been brought up, I've made the comment that I'd like to put a privacy fence up several times and nobody wanted that idea.
Uh, I have a question from discrepancy, I think, in some testimony. Is this actually on the property or is this a picture?
This is a future, what, what I, if it gets approved, what I'm gonna build.
So, but you do have something there currently?
Currently, I have standard 10 by 10 by six dog kennels and I have four of them attached together.
So, what would you do with those?
Sell them. I wouldn't need them if I had that. That's, the ideal thing is to be able to keep them separate.
Any other questions for Mr. Sharp from the commission? Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. You want to speak, sir? Thank you.
Uh, my name is John Thomas and I live next door to the Greens. And, uh, I'm sorry?
Give us your address, please.
3288 Perole Road.
Thank you.
And, uh, the dogs are really a nuisance as far as I'm concerned. They, uh, constantly barking. The smell is unbelievable. We'd like to sit on our back porch and we can't do it for the flies. They're just constantly on us. And, uh, my wife, we have a little, uh, workshop in the back of our house and my wife, we keep her feed for the birds that we, we're bird watchers. We really enjoy that. But my wife was out in her shop one day and, uh, filling up her feeders and she's kind of squatted down on the little, little stool, feeding up, filling her feeders and, uh, she turned around, looked and here's this big dog staring her right in the face. Scared her to death. And we shouldn't have to put up with that stuff. So, thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, come to the mic, introduce yourself, please. Sir? Do you have something new to add of what all we've heard?
I don't know if I have anything new. My name's Tommy Taylor.
If it's not new, just, we don't, you know?
Well, I, I'm telling you, I agree with everybody in here except for maybe one person. Uh, in this type of neighborhood.
Give us your name and address, please.
Tommy Taylor, 105 Dales Avenue.
Thank you.
This type of neighborhood, I, it's, something like this to come into this neighborhood. One of the best neighborhoods, in my opinion, in Danville, uh, is completely ludicrous, you know? I mean, your kids, people move here, close to schools, uh, safe neighborhood, tight neighborhood, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Do you have something new to add that we've not heard?
I've got recent pictures of the property, if you'd like to see them.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else need to speak, likes to speak? I thought we got it earlier.
That's Mr. Grubbs.
Yeah, he, he spoke earlier. Yeah. Mr. Grubbs, is there some way you can get us a copy of these pictures or not? Is there some way you can get us a copy of the pictures?
Yes, sir.
Because we need those to be entered into the record.
Turn them out for you.
What's your name again, sir?
Milton.
Milton Grubbs. Okay, thank you.
They lost them all.
I couldn't, it just touched it and it went away.
Go ahead, please.
Um, I just want to make sure that, uh, you have, if you have anything else to say with respect to what they said, so you have a chance to ref, 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 well, I mean, that should be entered in the, so you have an opportunity to, okay.
We'll do it anyway. Hey, you all don't need to debate, I know. Need to go to the mic, introduce yourself, name and address, please. You speak in favor or opposed? Thank you.
My name is Angela Gibson and I live at 121, sorry.
Excuse me, gentlemen, we can't have that debate going on and this going on at the same time. We just gotta have the one or the other, but not both. Thank you. Start over again, please.
My name is Angela Gibson and I live at 121 Nancy Avenue.
Thank you.
My question is, he hasn't always had the dogs there, so if we make this agricultural, can he bring in cows, pigs, whatever he wants at this point?
Yes.
So, it's just gonna be more of a nuisance then?
Right. He can do anything that?
So, he can continue to have his junkyard.
Agriculture permits if it's approved.
Okay. Yeah, that's, I just don't, I just don't think that that's, the reason why we bought in this neighborhood is because it is a very nice neighborhood. It's not a junkyard. You go into a lot of neighborhoods in Danville, people are cleaning them up, they're trying to straighten them up, but this is one of the more higher-end neighborhoods and no, none of these people out here want their property value to go down because somebody wants to put 40 dogs in his backyard or 10 pigs or cows or horses. And children don't want, people don't want to move into those neighborhoods with their children. It's just not fair.
Any other one else needing to speak, want to speak with regard to this issue? And if it's something new, fine, but if we've heard it, please don't just repeat.
Donna Hayfley. I live at 112 Dales Avenue. And the view that I have with the open, beautifully mowed, edged, blown, manicured lawns through, I see the top of a pontoon, some trailers, and then this is just what I see from the top. And if those dogs do stop barking, I don't know when. I can't even sit on the porch and get a phone call because people say, what is that? Or, do you have hyenas? Where do you live? I was the first house on Dale Avenue in the new section. I moved there 30 years ago. I made sure I did everything right, from the sodding to the sprinkler system. And everyone that has moved in there has followed suit. We manicure our lawns. We do not mow. Most of the people out there, a lot of them are retired. We do have children next door, belong to the minister, they have to catch that bus. Those dogs, I don't care if it's a light flashing, they never shut up. I don't hear them shut up. Now, they say they only go when sirens go. Man, I wish I could sleep during those short periods of time. But I beg you, do not do this. We all love our homes there. We have turned it into a beautiful subdivision. It's absolutely gorgeous. People come and they say, I didn't realize this was so nice. No, they didn't, but it is now. So, for all the blood, sweat and tears and the money we've paid, for all the landscaping and everything we've done, don't let this happen. I don't want to have to move. I don't. Because it would definitely deteriorate from my value of my home. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any questions from the commission? Hearing none, we will declare the public hearing closed at this time and we can have a motion to approve or deny as the commission sees fit or we can table it for further study. Correct.
I would make a motion to deny it, um, based on that it's not consistent with the adopted goals and objectives.
Motion's been made to deny based on the fact that it does not meet the adopted goals and objectives.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, uh, Ms. Rochester.
Yes, Ms. Wendy Rochester.
Mr. Baird, second. Ms. Rochester, would you, um, incorporate into your motion, hopefully Mr. Baird will agree, that there was absolutely no evidence introduced by the applicant that there was, that his application agreed with the comp plan. There was absolutely no evidence introduced by him that there were no major changes of an economic, social or physical nature, unanticipated by the conferency plan, which has substantially changed this area. And there was absolutely no evidence introduced by the applicant that the current zone that he has is inappropriate and that the AR-1 zone is appropriate.
Yes.
Yes. Baird, do you agree to that? That's a second.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the motion's been made by Wendy, second, by Jeff. Question discussion from the commission with regard to the motion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to deny? Votes unanimous. Thank you. We have item J as a closed session due to some pending litigation and personnel issues and so we need to go into closer executive session to discuss those issues, so we need a motion to do so.
I make the motion.
Jeff moves that we go into executive session to discuss pending litigation and personnel.
Mr. Chairman, I would just, there is a canned emotion at your seat to go into, I, I would ask that the motion be read specifically.
Oh, okay.
Uh, our local newspaper likes, uh, detail when we go into closed sessions there, as been, so, uh, it's ready to go in that format.
I make, you, I make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to KRS 61.8101C. Discussions are proposed or pending litigation against or on behalf of the planning commission and pursuant to KRS 61.101F. Personnel discussions or hearings which might lead to the appointment, discipline or dismissal of an individual planning commission employee.
Jeff makes that motion?
I'll second.
Susie seconds. All in favor of going to the executive session? Votes unanimous. Ladies and gentlemen. Susie's moved and I forget, somebody second to go back into regular session?
David.
David, second. Correct. So, we are at advisory committee report and I don't think we have anything to report there on advisory committee. Personnel committee report, personnel met and we have accepted the resignation of Jenny Holland, effective September 30th.
Yes, sir.
Something to that effect. And with regard to that, we are looking at maybe not replacing or filling that position for the time being and, uh, uh, farming out those services to another group or individual who may be able to perform that for us and we're gonna talk about that in the budget committee report. So, that's the personnel committee report and, uh, just again to reinforce it, we appreciate Jenny's service and her time and, and work and the good things that she did for us and we certainly wish her well in her new endeavors. So, so with that being said, we'll move to the budget committee report. Terry, you want to share on that, please?
First of all, let me give you an update on our legal services contract. If you might remember, at the last commission meeting, we talked about that we had three responses to an RFP for legal services, that the budget committee and Jerry evaluated those responses based on the six criteria. And based on the evaluations, we selected a firm to clarify the contract terms with and to try to develop a written contract. And where we are is we're still in that process. Uh, we, we received the selected firm's latest proposal on Monday and we'll be scheduling a budget committee meeting very soon to, to go through that and evaluate that compared to their prior proposal. So, that's where we are in the legal services.
Questions about that?
How many proposals did you get?
Three.
Okay.
Thank you for your work.
And we are, we're a little bit behind on our schedule. The other? The other, all the firms are inquiring where we're at in the process, so that's, we're working through it. The goal is to have this at the last meeting, and again, we're still negotiating with the top firm.
At this point, what are our issues that are keeping us from going ahead and approving?
The contract itself between the top firm, the terms of the contract, basically, and definitions. And I defer to the budget committee on that.
When do we think we might get those resolved, or do we?
Well, I would hope that the budget committee, and if you want to rejoin us, we'll meet sometime in the next week and consider the latest offer that we received on Monday and compare that to the prior offer and discuss where we are.
Well, just from, from an individual perspective, I have the feeling we've almost gotten hung up in the trees and lost sight of the forest. And I'm not sure that's the case, but anyway, it's a feeling that I have. And I would like for us to be as expedient as possible and get this resolved so that we can get that contract signed and, and move forward. So I'd just like to have those comments. Anything else on, with regard to that? Okay, bookkeeping?
Yeah, bookkeeping, you know, where we are is, we talked about the fact that we had a member of the planning, of the planning and zoning group resign, and so between the personnel committee and the budget committee, we decided to look at, seeing if we could outsource the bookkeeping services, which is one of the main jobs that Jenny was doing. And so, we did put an RFP out to the local accounting firms. We had five responses on those, and the budget committee met and reviewed all those responses. You can go through, you know, all the attached quotes are there if you want to look at them. Four of the five were, were, you know, a fixed price contract to do the work. The other firm quoted a dollar per hour rate and guessed, guessed at how many hours it would take them to do it. But our preference is to go with a fixed price contract for the defined bookkeeping services that we have. And so again, the budget committee reviewed that, and our recommendation is, is that we go to, with McDaniel Wealth for our bookkeeping services. They have the lowest quoted fixed contract price, which would be $4,800 a year for all the outlying tasks. And then we would stay with our current audit firm, which is Kerbal, Rhodes, and Butler to do our annual audit, and then we would use McDaniel Wealth to do the bookkeeping.
Did they also, I'm sorry, I didn't look, did they quote an alley rate in case something comes up that's not actually?
Yeah, it's like $110 to $150 an hour.
And I believe there was a transition fee on that, too.
Yeah, they had a $300 transition fee to get to know our stuff. So I guess I would, I'll put it in form of a motion. That is, you know, I would just advance a motion that we authorize Steve to proceed with finalizing agreement with McDaniel Wealth to provide our annual bookkeeping services.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Terry to accept McDaniel Wealth, is that correct?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Okay, and Jeff seconds with regard to their, accepting their services to provide bookkeeping for, what, 2018, 19 fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay. Question, discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Thank you. Anything else, Terry?
No.
Okay, thank you for your report, sir. Any other new business, comprehensive plan goals, objectives, Stephen?
You guys had that in your packet at the very end of your document, documents there. We met to talk about this last month, we had a pretty big case again, and it kind of, we just sort of finished off the day quick. As you guys know, we've got a KRS that governs our comprehensive plan, and we all in our mind are thinking, hey, we got a pretty recent comprehensive plan, 2017, right, amended. But as we were looking at the 2017 plan, and you can see right there on page three of this document, the actual goals and objectives of our conference plan were adopted back in 2012. So they're coming on the six-year mark. KRS 10197, and Bruce may jump in here, says once every five years, you either, you're supposed to revisit your comp plan, and specifically the goals and objectives. And what the planning commission can do is they can say, hey, they're still good, let's move on. We could re-adopt those in a new fashion, but we're supposed to at least in the five-year window, make some review of those. It kind of, just looked up and realized 2012 dates on all those goals and objectives that were adopted. So, guess it took a while to get the plan elements done. The conference plan was formally adopted in 17, but the goals and objectives date back to 2012. So I put a draft in, we can adopt those today. Those would have to go through a formal public hearing if you all choose to potentially re-adopt the goals, objectives in a slightly different fashion. Or you could simply, and we'll put this on next month, you could simply look at them and say, we still think they're good, and we'll just kind of rubber stamp them for another five years. If we change them, they got to go back out to the cities and the counties to be formally adopted. The goals and objectives have to go to the governments. Conference of plan elements, the authority rests with you guys. In addition to that, we've met with the Smart Growth Danville folks, and Ann and Charles have stuck through this whole thing, this is the stuff they're interested in, why they stuck around. We've met with them on the goals and objectives and just let them know that they're at the five-year mark, and we're going to talk about them. We've talked about some, some potential additions into the document, the housekeep, chapter one, they've looked at those and support some of those. So at this point, where you guys are is we could leave the goals and objectives alone, or we potentially could wordsmith those slightly and forward those out to the governments for approval. What we've tried to do in the goals and objectives, potentially if we amend them, is to beef up some language on how we use our future land use map in chapter one, like we have in chapter nine. We don't have anything in our goals and objectives that even talk about the fact we have a future land use map. We just say we have goals and objectives. And so some of the changes would literally say, we utilize a future land use map. We make those, like what we heard today, not only directives in chapter nine, but directives in chapter one. And the Smart Growth Danville folks and Bull County folks thought those made some sense. But we'll, we'll do whatever you guys want. We want to put this on next month's agenda formally, if you want to revise the goals and objectives, or do a review of those. Yes, sir.
On page four, it has that we do historic preservation for Johnson City and terrible, so aren't we going to be forced to revise them anyway because of that?
They need some revision. It gets back to this whole directive and who's in, who's out. Yeah.
I admit, admit that's minor, but you said if we change it.
The goal is to get these things revised and in place, so if down the road, we're making some changes, everything works within the system here. These are just drafts at this point, this is not the hearing. What we're talking about today is, do you guys want to discuss the goals and objectives next month, and just make you aware that the five-year timeframe has come and gone?
Why wouldn't we want to do a public hearing on something as important as goals and objectives?
Well, some communities look at them and say they're still good, they're still fairly relevant, they still read well.
Why wouldn't you want to give the public the option, the opportunity to look at them?
I like that approach. Yeah. Some communities say, hey, they still, you know, the goals and objectives are so generic, they, they work for 15 years, and you just sort of reaffirm them.
Last time I knew business there, it looks odd, it says Smart Growth Spring Conference slash Convention. It looks odd, you guys are going to wonder what is that? The mayor has approached me a couple times about it would be nice if you could lead a Smart Growth Seminar or Conference and help here in Danville. I go to trainings and events and other things, patient around the state. He thinks and has made, we've had discussions that we need this planning commission and counted that we think planned very well. Took the leadership role in trying to do something in our community, have a mini conference or Saturday session on what Smart Growth is or isn't or what it should be, and we're going to bring that to you. Now, there's budget ramifications there in a tight year, these things aren't free. We've talked with the Smart Growth folks, too, about a partnership possibly. We've got some great ideas on how we could do this, and might, might need to slow down a tad now, the staff has changed slightly, that might, but the goal would be the planning commission would take a lead role, being a need in our staff, work with another group, partner would potentially happen a one-day seminar here in Danville with some national speakers or a one-day conference if we could put it together. We met to talk to you guys about this last month. We estimate that that could cost somewhere between $5,000 and $8,000 to put on an event. You've got rooms and food and registrations, but you could do registrations if you're not. What we want to talk to you guys about is if you guys support an idea, and there would be a partnership, is what I've suggested, a matching partnership. If another group would work with us, we might put up some funds if they're willing to raise some funds. But in the short term, there needs to be a committee formed to talk about how we need to structure this, how we'll put together a conference, what costs we need to pay. So we're at the starting point of, do you want to do this with a target, or to try to do one in the fall? Obviously can't do that, it's fall. And now it's the spring, and so, go ahead, yes, sir.
Wouldn't, wouldn't this be something you would do as part of input to goals and objectives of a comprehensive? I mean, it would look silly, I would think, to adopt your goals and objectives and then three weeks later have a conference on Smart Growth.
Well, I think the goal here is, is our goals and objectives, in my opinion, are fairly generic, and they, and they read pretty well. I think they have Smart Growth principles in them today. I think what the goal of this conference is, is not to, to give input on what we might put the goal objectives, but to clearly educate the public on Smart Growth techniques that I think potentially will go in our zoning ordinance someday. Specific things like, for example, communities that do streetscaping a certain way, or how we do mixed-use developments in small communities, there's a lot of top farmland preservation. We just heard a case about our agriculture district and all these things, we allow communities to do some types of Smart Growth. Their act districts are structured very differently than our act district. So there's, there's 50 topics we could latch on to, you know, but we want to bring in some national folks who are smarter and energetic, thought this could go to educate our community on Smart Growth and why we should embrace some techniques and reject others. And I would think all of those would probably land in our zoning ordinance or subrarex oddly enough.
Who's the target, the audience for this conference?
Our county, our county citizens.
Just citizens?
That's what we heard, the directive, it could be to anybody, but what we don't want is all the farmers from around the state coming in and standing around and nod each other.
I've talked to actually a lot of businesses. I've talked to some friends and businesses who, they're really excited about that.
I would like to incorporate maybe some green things into that. I think that's probably more prevalent than, or is prevalent in development. There's a lot of green building, green develop, developing.
I agree. So the first step is, do you guys embrace our idea, knowing there's money here, we talked about there's a dollar and cents associated if we're taking on this role as a conference. I just came in the event planner, by the way.
Well, would, would the city and/or county or both not be interested in the financial aspect of supporting it?
We haven't gone that far because they thought we should take the lead, being the planning commission and development and growth. What I suggested with Smart Growth folks we met is that it'd be nice if we had a private partner came in, build that partnership, and maybe the planning commission's willing to put up half the money and get half from some businesses, for example, like Wendy's saying. That partnership, I think, could make for a neat conference if we had a private, public partnership. And I've done one like that before, where we put on a conference with an industry and some businesses. The challenge is, we're having conferences, planning a conference is a tough to do from a staff standpoint, and, you know, we're talking about good rooms and speakers and hopefully a successful event.
So, if we all agree that, this sounds like, or if most of us agree that this is a good idea, the next step would probably be to form a committee so the committee could help answer some of these questions you have.
Absolutely, we want that committee to be of, not just planning commissioners, but planning commissioners, possibly these folks, their group, and then maybe some business owners. We put a small committee, which would be the, the plant, the event planning, whatever we call it, talk about speakers, talk about topics.
Costs.
Talk about costs. Well, we've run that through the budget committee formally on our end anyhow, so we don't have a ton of money.
I think it's a good idea, and maybe, maybe spring may be optimistic. Maybe it's something that we need to put some thought and plan into, and if we're going to really do it, it may not be spring. It may not even be fall, maybe something you do a year from now, but.
The mayor asks us to take the role, he's involved with Blue Rest Tomorrow and Smart Growth initiatives in the state, attends a lot of conferences. He's seeing a lot of stuff that he thinks could be implemented in our community to make us a better place than where our, there's a small techniques as you described that could be implemented in our zoning ordinance or in the design and site plan that could just take Danville to the next step of, and he don't want to lose that opportunity in a community that really prides itself on good development, that's why I'm trying to get it better. So, I'm all for it if you guys are. It's a challenge for me, again, I'm not the best event planner, I barely can stay on time.
Well, I'm not altogether sure you have to be the event planner.
No.
No. There's, we could contract with somebody possibly, come in and help us guide this whole thing.
So is the next step, making a motion as to whether or not we support forming a broader committee to look into this, to provide a, you know, scope it out, cost and everything? Okay, well, I would make a motion then, that, that the, that the, our planning commission support the formation of a committee to look into a Smart Growth Conference, you know, both the scope of it, the timing, the cost, and that type of thing.
Do I hear a motion to that effect?
That's what I said. I said I made a motion.
I'm sorry, I missed the very first motion.
I second that.
And Wendy seconds it. All in favor? Vote unanimous. Do you have permission to proceed, I believe, sir?
We're likely to say thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Any other announcements for the commission? Any other good for the order? Hearing none, a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
David May, 10 seconds. We are adjourned.